Welcome, everyone. Welcome to spring, maybe a few days, but the weather's great. It's wonderful to be outside. Wish you all could be here with us as well. But I'd like to get the meeting started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing on our agenda is the public hearing for utility tax proposal. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing and the public comment section. Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Just for the record, to talk about why do we want to do a public hearing on the utility tax? First, let me just summarize the utility tax. It is really a 1% tax on all the utilities that are operating within the villages to compliance of the boundaries of the village of Rhinebeck. Examples: Central Hudson, Horizon, AT&amp;T, whatever, anybody who's doing that, except for the franchise organizations like Spectrum, where Spectrum, we collect a franchise tax from. But if you're an internet provider, a telephone provider, right, a utility provider with electricity, the law allows us to collect a 1% tax on the gross revenue for that corporation over a one-year period of time. Okay? This law was originally passed in 1959 by New York State. That allows only cities and villages to be able to collect this tax. Towns cannot participate in doing this. Towns have other avenues to tax people and do things that we do not have. So that's a summary, but in question, you're going to say, why do we want to do this? Right, there's a couple of things. Last year, we were at this table, and we were talking about our budget, and we were spending many, many nights working on trying to get underneath the 2% tax cap by New York State, which is the same thing we have this year, and we were able to pull it off by being $1 underneath the tax cap. Right? So that launched me on a mission to figure out how can we increase our revenues. And this is one of the ways we can, as a village, work to increase our revenues here that will go towards into our budget, into the general fund, and either, one, it could offload expenses, or it could do, it could allow us to do more, you know, if we want to do, you know, in terms of the revenue coming into the village. So at the end of the day, it's really a decision, because the law allows the utility companies to pass this on to us, residents of the village of Rhinebeck. We can have done a lot of work to try to figure out what does that mean to us. What it means to us is, one, we know that they can do it, right? Two, we're not sure how they do it, or when they do it, or what the process is for doing it. The state law says that they're allowed to do it. We reached out to the utility company. Central Hudson says, if the village passes it, we will abide by the law. They wouldn't tell us how they're going to abide by the law. They just said, we will abide by the law. Right? We reached back out to the Public Service Commission, and the Public Service Commission said, typically, it's up to utility company, but they may pass that back on to the ratepayers. All right? So the conundrum is, what do we do? It is a 1% tax. It is perceivably by the state, allowed to be passed on. We don't understand how that method is being done, but we have a choice. And it's really just our choice after hearings from the public and hearing our comments. A, you have to balance your budget somehow, right? B, you can either take the revenues in and use that to help balance your budget, or you can cut expenses somewhere if we need to, on some program or whatever that we may want to do, right? Or you can add it back in and tax it, right? If you want to keep that expense, it goes back into the tax. So you're going to, some way, you're going to end up, maybe at the end of the day, if you want to keep a program and you don't want to cut it, you're just going to pass it on as a tax back to our residents. We looked at different villages that do it, right? I reached out to the village of Fisk Hill. They currently have it. They collect $50,000 a year. The majority of it comes from Central Hudson, and then it goes to Horizon, and then it's meeting with Tadens, underneath all of that, right? They've been doing it since 2009, been passing this law, had passed this law. Reached out to the village of Millbrook. Village of Millbrook did it in 1968, right? They collect $30,000 a year, the majority being from Central Hudson, the utility company, and the rest is all meeting Tadens from telephone providers. So where are we in that spectrum? That's why I did those two, because I think we fit in between village of Millbrook and in between the village of Fisk Hill in terms of population-wise. So why we don't have a number, we won't have a number, it's up to us, if we pass the law, to go back out to utility and then have the utility come forward and do us, but they have to pay us based on the calendar year, January to December, and the payments are due in March. So that brings up to my next point. Why do this now? Why can't we just wait? Well, you could. You could pass this law in July if you wanted to, right? But it won't go into this budget cycle if you do that. It'll come in as revenue, but it won't offset any of the taxes or offset any of our, help us balance our budget. It'll be revenue brought in, revenue brought in. So kind of why I was pushing for, trying to get to a decision point for doing this was to figure out, A, do we need this for our budget? We don't know yet. We're going through the budget process. If it's like last year, we're going to be down to the nitty-gritty on doing what we need to do. So I'm looking for revenue. That's the sole reason I'm doing this, is trying to bring in whatever revenues we possibly can, right? With the hope that it's of minimal impact, either by, to our residents, because if we end up doing it, we're going to end up taxed, if we end up needing a program, we're going to tax the residents for it. So that's my entry. We have a couple of people here. If you want to ask a question, I'm going to open up for public comment. Susan, if you want to come up, you have to.
I know. I know the drill.
You did. First radio.
Hi.
And this is on the utility tax law, not public comment.
Yes, no, this is all the utility tax law. Susan, on Z-Man Road, Village.
Susan, do you not, I'm going to show you how to turn that mic off.
Oh, is it on?
There's a button, right? Push it to the green light. There. Sorry, not your fault.
Okay. So I have a few questions. The first question I have is, you said some other local villages are doing it. Did you happen to find out if they raised the rates on their utility users?
So I asked both communities if, they don't raise the rates. Utility companies do.
Right, the utility companies do.
I asked both of them, A, have you seen or heard of anybody getting their rates increased? And both of them said no. Right? So that's where we're at. They don't have any issues with it. They don't have any complaints. They don't have any complaints with it, and they cannot tell you if the residents are being taxed.
This is, right, so I've been talking to Sarah Hanna's office, and it's a tax on the grocery receipts of all the utilities' sales within the village. So 1% is added to, whatever their grocery receipts are, 1%. So your bill would go up 1%. That would go for electricity part and the delivery part would go up 1%.
Okay, so that actually segues nicely into my next question.
Yeah, that's what they're allowed to do, as I said, they're allowed to do by state law. They can pass that on.
No, it's not allowed. That's the way it works. I mean, there's not, I mean, Central Hudson is not going to take, you know, this out of their pocket and give it to us. They're going to add it to it. We looked at two bills. One was from Millbrook and one was from Rhinebeck. And the Millbrook one is paying 3% tax and we are paying 2%. There's a 1% right there. That's what I think is happening.
And to go along with that, I have anecdotal information from somebody else that is not in the program. They're, they live in Pleasant Valley, and their rate is 1% higher than our rate currently, and they're not in the program. So it just doesn't make sense what the utility company is doing. We have three municipalities. Two of them are greater than the village of Rhinebeck today. One is in and one is not in.
Are you talking about the rate per kilowatt hour or the?
No, that's the total tax between the two of them.
I guess I talked about, I haven't seen those. I've just seen these two municipalities.
Anyways, this is for Susan, not Elmer. I need Susan to ask a question.
So the second question I have is if you end up going with the CCA, and that energy is coming from another state, which is what Zoom that I was on, she talked about, it comes from Oklahoma or Texas or something, does that, will that also be taxed? How does that work, or does that not apply to this?
It is applied. So if we're in the CCA.
Collect a tax from another state?
It says right on the bottom of all their forms. If you're, if we adopt through the CCA their energy pricing, the 1% is added on to the municipalities.
I just didn't know if that would, because the rates for that was already, were already a little bit higher from.
So the rates, the rates of the CCA. Yeah. The rates that the CCA gives us would be 1% higher.
Sorry, I'm not wearing my bifocals. Okay, this may sound like a dumb question, but I'm just, you're not taxing our own utilities, right, like the water or wastewater?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Water and wastewater, which we run, we're not taxing ourselves, right? Okay. I know that might sound dumb, but you know, it's a utility, and I just wanted to know.
Utilities are defined by electric, telephone, Rich, is it telephone, the original law said telephone, this is Rich Olson, our attorney, telephone, electric, telegraph.
So we're in water, definitely not in coal.
Tax machine, what other old technology can we tax? And so I guess my big thing is, you know, are we just, what was the saying, stealing from Peter to pay Paul or something to that effect? Like, are we going to, are we just going to do this tax, but then we're essentially paying the tax to Central Hudson instead of to the village of Rhinebeck? Or that, you can't, you can't know that for sure. Like, if we pay, if Central Hudson's paying us, they're going to charge us more, so are we just paying them what we would?
They are allowed, they are allowed by law, by state law, to pass that on to the ratepayer.
But we don't know if that's going to happen.
We can only assume that it would, in my opinion, but we just don't know how they do it or where it's incorporated. Is it incorporated into the tax? Is it incorporated into some other line item? You know, the state law was very clear. It says it may be identified as a separate line item. Well, I'm sorry, I would like to have the exact order, Rich. Remember what the state law said in terms of adding it as a line item into the bill?
The words are that the utility should be charged against and paid by the utility may be added as a separate item to the bills rendered by the utility to the customer. It would be added to the tax, whatever the tax line is.
All right, those are my questions. So, you know, it just, it seems like almost a gamble, but I mean.
What do you think?
Like I said, I feel like, I feel like it's a little bit of a gamble, and I just think about people who maybe are already on the margins with the cost of utilities at this point, and, you know, for them not to, for them to have a 1% increase, it doesn't seem like a lot, but for somebody who's already on the margin, that's, that's, could be a significant amount of money. And with, you know, already Canada threatening to raise our rates for the utility, the power that they send down to us, which I know is like still in flux, and they're going back and forth, so.
It was rescinded today.
Right, but that doesn't mean it's going to be, that doesn't mean it's not going to be reinstated tomorrow, you know? So our energy costs may already be rising, so I don't know. I'm not a gambling person, so I always, you know, kind of play it safe when I get to the poker table.
Would you rather, would you rather us cancel a program if we had to then?
You know, that's, that's hard for me to think about. I really was coming more, my comments were more like just to get a lot more clarification and maybe get some clarification for other folks out there who maybe didn't know about it or hadn't heard about it. And I had some questions after the last meeting. Hey, there's a whole TV audience I could do all to this.
And thank you, Susannah.
So I just had some questions from, from the last time when I was here, when you brought it up, and it was more. I didn't really, I hadn't really had a chance to formulate an opinion, because I wanted to get the question answered first, if that's fair.
Thank you.
I know that's part of what we're in.
All right, I think that would conclude our public comment section, and I'd like to continue with the public hearing portion for the board. Okay. Do you want to close the public hearing? Yeah, I want to close the public comment section.
Close the public hearing? We can keep talking.
Yeah, that's right. I can make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Close the public comment.
You want a comment? Okay.
We're allowed to keep talking about it even if it's not a public hearing. Are we waiting for somebody else to come through the door? We're going to hold the public hearing, ask questions.
Oh, okay. I see. Okay. We have a first, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. All right, now it's open to the board.
Well, I'd like to weigh in. I'm opposed to this. I think people are struggling.
Elmer, your speaker is not on.
I'm opposed to this. I think people are struggling. People are scared. People are losing their jobs. They might be, we lose a job one day, and the next day, they're hired back. It's a pretty chaotic time. I've gone to several of the campaign events around the village, and we've heard how successful we've been at getting grants, which we have been very successful at getting grants. We have a good-sized fund balance that we're working on. We're talking about how to spend that down to get it within the 25% level. I just think that it's a little bit tone deaf to be talking about raising taxes. I know it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but just these last few months, the rates have been, the electricity rates have been lower, so people may not see it right away. But if you have an electric vehicle, for example, which we've been encouraging people to get, and you, you know, you have a medium-sized house, all of a sudden, you're going to see some dollars here and some dollars there. I was not aware that Horizon could be taxed. I thought it was only on landlines, so that could be an additional, you know, an additional problem for people. I just think, I just think that this is not the good time to do it. I mean, in terms of cutting programs, I don't think we'd have to cut programs. We might have to trim parts of programs, but I don't think we're in danger right now of cutting programs. I think we're in very good financial shape.
I just want to clarify one thing that you just suggested. I think we meant Horizon landlines, not cellphones.
Gary said that.
Yeah, this doesn't apply to cellphones. This only applies to.
But that's minimal. Then that's not even.
Right, exactly. So like, the big question here is Central Hudson, that I think everybody's doing.
Your speaker is not on.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that this isn't talking about taxing people's cellphone bills. But yeah, I heard everything that you said.
Did we, did we figure out whether or not the, that Central Hudson, there had been an idea that, oh, maybe they're already making this into their cost of doing business, and that we wouldn't necessarily see them do an additional pass through right on the bill, but did we ever assess that, whether that's?
You know, I'm clarifying. Now, Rich.
It's not in their rate. This is a separate tax that you have the right to collect, which they have the right to pass on, on their bill. Whether they do it or not, I can't tell you.
So I think we don't know the answer to that question.
Well, they just gave these.
Well, right, but we don't know what, we don't know what Central Hudson actually does. Like, there isn't like.
There's a, there's a state and local tax line on your bill.
Right.
So that's where it shows up. It doesn't, it doesn't give you the percentage that's being paid, but there is a state and local tax line on the, on the bill at the very bottom, at the very last.
Yeah.
Last, yeah.
But in comparison of three municipalities, two out and one in, one is in, is at 3%, one that is not in is at 3%, and we are at 2%. So it's, even that line doesn't make sense to us in terms of how the utility company is going to do this.
I can only, I can only report what Sarah Hanna's office told me, because they got a response from Central Hudson, and their response was that they would collect it because they are required by law to do so, and it would be a 1% additional fee on top. They did not say they were going to eat the 1%. They said it would be on top of, and it would, it would, you know, be part of our bill, would go up 1%.
So I think either way, as you were talking with Susannah about, like, it's a gamble, right? Like, it's a gamble. We don't, we don't really know. We can take Central Hudson at their word. We can analyze bills from all over the Hudson Valley, but, you know, like, Central Hudson is, nobody trusts Central Hudson at this point in terms of like, understanding where, where their numbers are coming from on their bills, right? If there's two municipalities and one municipality out, and one of those municipalities is at 2%, and the other two are like, it, so, but I do think that the question here is, you know, are we willing to pass this law? Are we willing to have folks, like, I think the ultimate question here is, are we willing to have folks' rates go up by 1%, are we willing to have folks' tax at 1%, like, an additional 1%? Because that could happen, right? So that, I think that's the question, is are we willing to pass a 1% utility tax onto our, onto our ratepayers? One thing about ratepayers is they are a different category of folks who live in the village than property taxpayers. So I know that renters pay property taxes through their rent, so I'm not saying that, but, you know, nonprofits, schools, churches do not pay property taxes. So, you know, it's a different sort of, in the Venn diagram of who helps fund the village, utility ratepayers are a different category of constituent. We are talking about a 2% override for the budget. One question here might be, should we hold off on answering this particular question until we know what our final budget numbers look like? Just like, we're not going to know if we're going to be, if we're going to have to go over the 2% for the budget, you know, should we wait on this question until we sort of figure out if this is revenue that we actually need in order to balance fiscal '26, in which case we could hold this vote the same day that we hold budget vote? Or prior to that, or once we know more information about our budget process, because we don't know the final numbers on our fiscal '26 budget process.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, in terms of timing.
Right.
And Gary, you had mentioned that with this new tax law, this new law, that March is the time when they typically make the payments. Is there a time frame by which we have to let them know that the new tax has, tax law has been passed in order for it to go into effect?
No, we could pass this law later.
Yeah.
Depends, back to your comments, where can we make it into the budget cycle if we need it? That's the issue.
Right.
Right?
So April or?
Well, we're, the public hearing is April 8th. Really, our next big village board meeting is April 8th, and that's when we'll have a public hearing on the budget.
So we'll know by then.
So Karen, is that possible, to hold this off in terms of doing the calculations?
It's up to you.
Yeah. I mean, do you put it in and do the calculations? And what number do we put into the budget? Right? Because Karen and I have been, kind of like, have a spread of where we think.
Well, we've held the public hearing, and we're going to be meeting as a board at least four times before April 8th. And so we could always vote on this if we need to, yes or no, in any one of those meetings, right? We've already given the public the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Susannah. And.
I do not represent all of the public. I assure you of that.
Just the ones who wear very bright yellow shirts.
That's right.
So.
I'm very much fine.
So I mean, because this is now a revenue question and not necessarily a, is Central Hudson holding our money and we're just not accessing it question.
Right.
I think we need to treat this like a revenue question, and so do we actually need the revenue? And we're not going to know until we have a better idea of what's going on with budget.
So what about the process here? Just help me on the process. If we hold on the vote, do we keep the public hearing open?
The public hearing's closed. You don't have to vote at this point.
So we can vote at any time?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I want to make that clear. Is that what the board would like to do?
Yeah.
All right, let's get through the budget process.
Great.
All right. Cool. Thank you. All set?
Let me know what you need. Let's.
Rich, so Susie.
Okay. Randy. As everybody knows, we did, last year in our budget, we put money into the budget to do a deep dive into our storm drainage systems around the village. That analysis has been completed by Time Bond.
Great.
And so this is an overview. Some of us, Rick and I, have already had that overview presentation and, you know, had some thoughts on it as well, but it wasn't 100% complete when we got the first review by Time Bond, which was a while ago. But that is now completed. Randy from Time Bond is here to take us through that.
I need a moment for technology.
Technology, catch up.
Great, give me a moment. I'm sorry, I was like. Do you want, is it, do you have a short item that you want to do while I get my computer going? Do you want to do the terminals report?
Should we do sure? Dental vision?
Public comment section?
Do you have?
You know, my public comment is paving my road.
A and B.
Where do you, what, where do you want?
Manor.
Is that happening this spring?
What?
The Manor Road.
I get a nice lane at the end of my road right now.
Remember, when we're meeting, I delegated that to Rick and Cloud to go back to plan. Oh, we don't know yet.
That's my safe public comment for everybody.
While we're waiting for that, just sort of board those. Our roads have taken a real beating this year. We didn't have snow, a lot of snow, but we had deep freeze and deep frost, and our roads are just, we can't keep up. We've been doing everything we can to pave as much as we can, as much as we can afford to do, but we can't keep up to the deterioration that years of neglect that our roads have had to be able to do it all at one time. Typically do three quarters of a mile, is that?
We try to do a mile here.
A mile here. So.
So we might hit the ripping from the bottom.
It just.
Just hit exit.
Wait, it'll go.
Even if it'll just disappear on its own.
It'll just disappear.
You could also hit exit.
I can hit exit?
Yeah. Or not.
Oh, there we go. Thank you so much.
No, thank you. The end down near Somers, or the end closer to Nollard?
On Nollard.
Yeah.
I mean, I made this comment that maybe you just, no, I think it's just a funny joke at this point, but the, the entire road is crumbling. There's just like, like, literally, people's driveways are just like dirt from.
Have you walked Somers lately?
I have not walked Somers lately.
Go walk Somers, go walk North Park.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm, I know, there's a lot, I know there's a lot of them. And like I said, I know that there's a process with the road paving, and, you know, for me at this point, it's kind of, yeah, it was supposed to be done a few years ago, so now I'm just keeping it in the, you know, in the back of the brain for everyone.
Randy.
Okay, all right. Great, thank you. Good evening, you guys. And I'm Randy Nelson, and I'm an engineer with Time Bond, and as Mayor indicated, we have, as part of some of the drainage inventory and assessment we've been doing throughout the village, taken a look in particular at the drainage on, we've called it Chestnut Street Drainage, and I think that's because.
we've called it Chestnut Street Drainage, and I think that's because for years there's been flooding on both sides of Chestnut Street. But as we get into it, you'll see that, you know, it's a little bit more complex picture. And so I will step you through this level of feasibility study that was done, and our alternatives for potentially addressing it, and some high-level costs associated with it, and sort of a discussion of what next steps might look like. So, the area question, again, we're calling it the Chestnut Street Drainage Area, is a drainage area that extends quite a bit north of Crossmore Street. So I hope you can see on the plan, the light green area in the upper right corner of the image. And then there are several colored polygons that connect down to, and they neck down at the bottom of that image to a culvert that passes underneath Route 308 and discharges into the Landsman Hill. And that drainage system, and all its little subwatersheds there, each represented in a separate color, is a total of about 66.7 acres. And it is a mix of residential development and undeveloped woodland area.
Randy started, yes, the light green shaded part, you're saying that's kind of like the, like the mini watershed? You're not saying that there's actual drainage pipes going up there?
It's a watershed, and it consists of both natural drainage swales and also some pipe network. So it's a, it's a mix.
Wow, really?
I think that's the impression lots of people have, because it's a bigger area than one might, might expect in that neighborhood. We, so residential and undeveloped area. We looked at it, when we ran our hydraulic model on it, using what's called a 25-year storm, which is a common-sized storm that the DOT recommends using for storms related to roadway impact. So it's not your smallest storm, it's, it's more frequent than the storm you would get in a hurricane event, but less frequent than that sort of day-to-day rainfall that we're seeing. So it's a nice medium-sized storm to design to. In, in the peak event, we would have, in a 25-year storm, 36 cubic feet per second. And so, someone in our office thought it was great to put this in terms of above-ground pools filling. So a 24-foot diameter is your typical above-ground pool, filling in 54 seconds. So it's a, it's a large volume of water.
Wow.
And then, in a 50-year storm, 44 cubic feet per second. So that same pool filling in 44 seconds. Our work consisted of a visual observation, an inventory of the various components of the system, including the, the natural wetland area and, and stream channel up at the upper part of the watershed, down through the culvert pipe that goes under Route 308. We also included in the study having a licensed land surveyor survey for existing conditions, the entire drainage network, specifically the area that we needed to model to see if pipes that are existing in that network are sized properly. So that surveyor completed the work there. We ran a hydraulic model, and then we calibrated that model. So we, we do theoretical inputs on that model, but then what we do is we backcheck that model against conditions based on observations that residents have reported to the village over the last few years about where water has accumulated and pooled and caused some flooding concern. So we were able to sort of fine-tune the model. And if you're familiar with that area, it's relatively flat from the north side of Chestnut Street down to south side of Star. And so having the survey is really important, and I'll explain why in just a moment. In terms of findings of both our field inventory and our land surveyor's survey, what we found was that portions of the drainage way through that area were, the village was granted an easement, associated with some subdivision of land back in the 1950s. So portions of this drainage way were acknowledged as far back as the 1950s, and there was a accommodation made to the village for maintenance of the drainage way at that time. But not all of it. So we've got areas of drainage that are in an easement, and we've got areas of drainage that are outside an easement. So we have a little bit of a mixed bag there. We have also, based on our field observation, observed that there are structures and other improvements that have been placed in that easement that are now providing obstructions and restrictions within the drainage way. We also, through the survey, determined that some of the drainage pipes are actually pitched in the wrong direction, whether they were installed that way originally, or they have settled in an uneven way. Pipes flowing in the wrong direction don't give us the full capacity of that pipe. And so that has created some constraints in the system. And then, on top of that, there are a number of pipes that are almost flat. So when a pipe is flat, you don't get any conveyance beyond just like the diameter of the pipe when it's full. When it's pitched, the water will flow, and you can actually carry more volume through that pipe. So, so a number of things that sort of come together to create a little bit of a perfect storm that results in some pretty dramatic flooding. So, we had, just in our files, some flooding pictures that were provided to us by residents whose properties front on Seymour and Chestnut Street. And, you know, you can see that's quite a lot of water that has backed up on the north side of Chestnut Street and created this flooding condition for a number of the houses in that area. Yes.
When you talk about structures, do you mean like people built, like, even houses in that, those areas?
It's a number of different things. It's sheds and little retaining walls, so landscape features and accessory structures. Yep, so a number of different things. And so, then we looked at, okay, how can we improve the, the condition of the drainage there? It's very constrained. The lower part of the watershed is all residential houses. The village has an easement they need to work in. And so there are a number of improvements that we're calling standard improvements that would be presented in any of the three alternatives. And these improvements would include making drainage improvements at the intersection of Crossmore Road and Crossmore Drive, and allowing that water to be routed via a culvert pipe. Can you see my cursor? No? Okay, sorry.
No.
So, that is...
If you want to, like, Vanowide it.
I could Vanowide it, yeah. So areas that need improvement regardless are replacement of culvert at Star Drive, replacement of a culvert at Chestnut Street, and provision of some sort of drainage culvert, excuse me, drainage catch basins and stormwater pipe that would go down Chestnut Street and pick up the runoff that comes off Crossmore Drive. Okay?
And Star.
And Star, yeah. All right. So, we'll run through three alternatives. So, alternative 1A is to reroute a portion of the stormwater. I'm going to Vanowide again, because that's more... So, just to help everybody understand exactly what's going on here. So, the water originates in the upper part of the watershed, in a wetland stream area. And when the conditions are right, the water level rises, and there's a swell that forms, or a little intermittent stream that forms, in the northwest corner of the village, or northeast corner of the village. And it comes through the yards here and goes through a culvert in Crossmore Road, and then works its way via a swell or intermittent stream into the shared property line for these houses between Seymour and Crossmore. And then there's a very well-defined stream channel that has been channelized, that goes down through the property line. That's where the village has, and one of the easements. And then there's no easement here at this property, but the...
Perfect.
The channel is very well-defined, and the water enters into a culvert pipe that goes under Chestnut Street. And then the drainage pipes on Seymour also come over, and they discharge into the swell now. We're proposing, in this alternative, to not send as much water through this channel. And by doing that, what that allows us to do is route it around to below the culvert and eliminate the amount of water that flows through here, thereby reducing the frequency with which that should flood. You're diverting some of that water. So it'd be traditional storm drainage, down Crossmore to the intersection with Chestnut, that would tie together on the outlet side of Chestnut Street. And then we would replace the pipe under Chestnut with a new pipe. We would reroute the pipe that connects from Seymour along Chestnut. Right now, it discharges into the north side of the Chestnut Street drainage, which is a little bit weird, because it discharges water sort of upstream of, as water's flowing down, and it creates this swirl. Thank you. Rick and I went and looked at it one day, it was swirling really dramatically, but that can be very erosive. So that's eroding the main thing there. So we would reroute that so that it flows down, which is the way you want water to flow generally. And then we will replace the culvert pipe that runs between Chestnut Street and Star Drive with a new 36-inch diameter pipe. And we would replace the drainage under Star, as discussed before, and replace the drainage section from Star to the outlet swell that exists currently, goes down to, under State Route 308. So this, we're calling this the reroute stormwater alternative, where we're running, where we're diverting some of the water around this portion of the neighborhood in a more conventional storm water conveyance system.
Bren?
Yes.
Is the, in this instance, is the stormwater pipe running from the top of, all the way down? Is that a contiguous pipe right there?
Yes.
Okay.
So, would there be, like, grates or whatever in the street? Or are you just, like, capturing it all at the top of the road into a pipe and then piping it down?
So, right now, the way the, the situation would work was, there would be a, a manhole placed in the culvert that is underneath Crossmore Road, so that existing culvert, to intercept the flow. And the water would be diverted in a storm drain south on Crossmore. And there are a couple of catch basins on Crossmore already. We would tie those to this new storm drain. And then we would put new catch basins at the intersection with Chestnut, because there aren't any there now. But there is a drainage condition from water coming off the hillside here that is just sort of sheet-flowing across Chestnut Street and into these people's yards, and makes it down into this swell. It's a little bit uncontrolled, so this would bring a little bit more control to it. We haven't worked out the details, but we had talked as an option, potentially having an overflow. So primary flow from this inlet swell gets diverted, but if there was a very large storm event, we would leave the, there'd be like a secondary potential overflow there. All right. So we've done some very high-level estimating on this, just to provide construction numbers. So, 1.58 million for that drainage improvement.
Could something get cheaper from here?
It, unfortunately...
Oh, it does, it's, oh, great.
So, so the other thing we can do is we can not do the leg of new storm drainage down Crossmore. So there, there's definitely costs associated with that. The construction of those pipes, the addition of those catch basins. But what we would want to do is increase the capacity of the existing swell. And what that would require is for that swell to be unrestricted. So the village would need to enforce the easement that is already in place there. And the, the restrictions that have been placed within the easement would need to be removed. And then acquire an easement for the upper section, so that's between the arrows that say continued use of swell above that. There's no easement existing, and so that would need to be obtained so that the village has the ability to maintain drainage.
That's why this is not a complete cost.
There's some, it's hard to put a number on that.
Right, it's hard to put a number on the possibility, but this is cheaper just in terms of construction, not in terms of probably actual out, outlay.
The situation is a little bit complicated and probably requires some input from the village's attorney. There is a drainage way there now.
Okay.
Right? And so maintaining that is essential to draining the entire network. What, the village isn't looking to own it, they want the right to keep it flowing without obstruction. And so that's what the easement would need to secure.
Yeah, so that's kind of what got us into where we are. The original thought was to do this, right?
Right, like poorly maintained easements, yeah.
Take care of the natural flow, in terms of the way it was done.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, over the course of many years...
75 years.
We have a problem.
Yeah.
Right? And, given this, I'm going to talk about climate change a little bit. Given the type of storms we have, we're not changing the depth of the stream that is there, which flows today. Okay?
Yep.
Now, if you improve improvement, improve the flow, essentially you could keep water moving, and it won't back up and flood, but there's still that risk of it flooding.
It's another gamble, got it.
And then, under this scenario, the culvert pipe under Chestnut Street, because now we're letting all the flow go to it, needs to be increased in size. So that would be increased in size to 36 inches from the 18 inches that it is now. And then, similar to the first option we talked about, we would have a 36-inch pipe installed from Chestnut Street to Star. And then we would improve the pipes below Star to the outlet swell that extends down to Route 308. Again, high-level planning level costs, $1.06 million for this option.
Would, for this one, the pipe that currently dumps out at the north side of Chestnut Street, would you also be rerouting that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, under all the scenarios, we need to, because it's flowing essentially backwards. So we want to get it flowing in the right direction. The, the last option is essentially the, the option I just described. But instead of having a culvert pipe from the south side of Chestnut Street to the north side of Star, we would install, we would do what's called daylighting. Where you're daylighting the waterway, and we would create a grass swell in through there. There is an easement already in place associated with that pipe, and so the swell could be constructed within the easement. A two-foot-deep, nine-foot-wide grass swell is what we used for sizing, and it does convey the flow and stays within the swell's boundaries. So, daylighting is an approach that is often recommended by the D E C. It goes back to approximating more the natural channel configuration. I think the challenge in a scenario like this is that we're dealing with a lot of residential backyards, and it's very constrained, and you don't have a lot of wiggle room. We don't have, we have, like, people's yards, not like the natural environment that we would be allowing any water, that is in excess of this to flood into. So, so...
Randy, just a comment on that.
Yes.
The residents got wind of this, and they were like, you, you will not, we will not let you open up that ditch.
Yeah.
They will, they will.
Right. Because they've taken great pains to landscape over the pipes that are there today, you know, and have contiguous. And they talk about safety, kids playing, not playing, they don't want the kids playing in the ditch, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, there's a thousand reasons.
Although, that is how I became a civil engineer, was like playing in the ditch.
I know.
Yeah, so I will, I have good things to say about that.
I mean, like, to be fair, a two-foot-deep, nine-foot-wide swell is not like a drop, it's not like a cliff. But yes, I, I, I hear the concerns of the residents.
We wanted to give you a full spectrum of options, and this is one that is not uncommon anymore. And again, it's about a similar cost to the other option, $1.02 million.
Well, and the nice thing, actually...
But this one is, it's, it's not diverting it upstream, so it's still the same amount of water flowing through here, so it's...
Yeah.
Bren, is there any chance of doing dry wells in the upper section of Crossmore?
Catch basins, catch basins.
Catch basins.
And there are, she said, there's catch basins.
No, 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 without laying a pipe.
Oh.
I don't think that that would be sufficient enough. It wouldn't do anything for the portion, when we looked at that original watershed map, of the light green area and what it contributes to the drainage area. So that upper portion of the watershed, no. The, the other thing that I think we need to, that we don't know yet, but we should think about is how much deep sandy soil is available in that area for things like dry wells. If that is an option, and we've not done any soil testing, that would be something you would do later on in the design. I think for this village, it's a good option, and if, we've seen it historically here in the village, because you have a lot of areas with sandy soils. This portion of the village has a little bit more diversified terrain. This portion of the village has a little bit more diversified terrain. It's got some rocky outcrop, so I don't know what the picture will be underground, but it's something that certainly can be looked at in the design phase.
Did you do the modeling, like running them through these three scenarios?
Yes, yeah, we did, yeah. And the modeling is really how we got to that 36-inch pipe between Chestnut and Star. That area is very, very flat, and so you really need a big pipe to capture the flow. Right now, there's, I think it's two 15-inch diameter pipes. And there's actually a couple of grates along those pipe runs. And when there's a bigger storm event, the water actually surcharges up out of that and creates a flooding condition. I, it, over a decade, I've been there half a dozen times, so I haven't seen that, so. So we want to get away from that condition. And because it's a flat, we don't have a lot of room to play with, we can put the pipe a little bit deeper and accommodate that larger flow, keeping it from surcharging out into the yards if we use that 36-inch.
South of Star, are we improving that swale? Do we have an easement south of Star?
There is an easement that runs from Star all the way to the state route.
Right, so we can improve that.
You could if you wanted to. It's in pretty good shape. There, we're suggesting some minor, you know, like grading and reshaping. It's a little bit tricky to get to. You can get to it from the end of Star, but otherwise it basically backs up to people's yards and it's quite a steep drop off.
Sort of speaking of like climate change and putting a whole bunch of pipes in the ground, is there, like, I'm totally appreciating the fact that like this picture is like tiny in comparison to the watershed that it's capturing. And so this might just be a bit of a naive question, but, you know, I am not dismissing the concerns of the residents, but in a world where, you know, absorbing water back into the ground instead of piping it into what, this all ends up what in the landsman?
In the land, okay.
You know, I mean, we're all trying to do like permeable, semi-permeable surfaces and all of this stuff to try and like, are any of the recommendations that you're offering sort of better for that kind of thing? You know, like a grassline daylight swale sort of seems like a nice idea, you know, because...
And a grassline swale, much like the swale that is upstream of Chestnut, allows for some exfiltration of that water into the sub-surface. So that's the benefit of a stream, right? So streams can yield water and they can shed water. And that is the only, the grassline swale is the only option that would present an opportunity for water to be infiltrated back in, based on what we're proposing now. With the exception of if the soil test would prove out in a design phase, we would go with cap, with dry wells for the drainage structures, which means they would allow infiltration initially, and then when they got to full, it would overflow into the drainage system as a secondary means of managing the water.
Got it, okay.
So Brandon, I recently shared with you an announcement by New York State on infrastructure for grants. Eighty million dollars have been made immediately available by New York State for a grant process.
Yeah.
And ask you to look into that to see if there's a plentiful grants that we could use regardless of what path we go.
Right.
You know, let's put it, we're gonna, we'll avoid a tax cut, we'll go our tax cut in my favor this, everybody.
No kidding?
So...
We'd have to double taxes to maybe...
You know, in terms of next steps, so I'm really happy that you guys invested the money to do this feasibility study, because what it does is it puts us in a position where we've got the analysis and the cost, and that is what we can use for grant applications. And so just in terms of, you know, how we proceed, we'll need to deliberate with you all and, you know, take questions. PowerPoint is backed up via a study that we'll deliver to you. But decide what makes the most sense for the village as far as an option to select, and then look at what funding opportunities are available. The Resilient Watershed Grant is the one you just spoke of, Mr. Mayor, and that current round is open right now with grants due, grant applications due on June 4th. We are looking at that, and this may be a good candidate for it. The other program that we're familiar with, we worked with a village at Tivoli last CFA round on a very similar situation where a neighborhood had some historic flooding, and we're able to get them a Climate Smart Communities Grant. Like Tivoli, the village is a Climate Smart community. You guys have done a lot of work there, and so the state gives you a few extra points on your application that can help bump you up in the scoring for funding. So that may be an option as well. And then there are several other CFA opportunities. Every year their programmatic focus changes, so I can't tell you until May when CFAs come out again, assuming they do come out again, what opportunities may be available, but we want to keep our eyes open for that. And then I would say lastly, we don't have it on here, but we've talked about it before, that your CHIPS funds can be used for drainage improvements. And I know that that's coveted money for all sorts of roadway improvements, but can also be used for drainage improvements, which improves the life of your roadways.
So Brandon, typically, grants require a village contribution?
Yes.
To be able to get through. If we were to put this into the 25, 26 budget cycle on a million-dollar project, what would be the normal recommendation to...
I will need to get back to you on Resilient Watershed. Last round, Climate Smart was 20%. It was 20% much.
We're gonna have to start bonding for some of these.
Well, I mean, absolutely, but then bonding, you've got to add in the interest in...
No, no, I, yeah, no, I get that, but...
It's, yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have 200, more than a thousand, I don't think, to come up with, to put towards this, right, on a million-dollar project. We have to bond in some way.
Well, I know, but we chose not to bond for...
Safe routes of school.
Safe routes of school.
Because we use our fund balance to do it, yeah. Now, now we're down to the point where we may not have enough fund balance to do that.
Yeah, no, but that's, my point was maybe we should have also bonded for Safe Routes of School, but...
We still can.
We still could, I mean, yeah. Because there's a question here of also like when this will kick in and when Safe Routes of School will kick in and like, which is sort of a better use of money that we have on hand.
So what's your recommendation?
Yeah, of those three?
Of the three, I would say option 1B probably. I think that's where you start. Let me go back to that one. So that's this one, where you work with the configuration of the drainage system as it is now and upsize the pipes in the lower section of it. Have the conversations with the neighbors about acquiring easements so that the drainage ways can be maintained free-flowing. And if that is not fruitful, then we look at the diversion option.
What does it take to maintain that sort of apostrophe, the backwards apostrophe appropriately?
Yeah, so typically when an easement is in place in an area that's sort of sensitive like this, where changes to the swale can really affect flooding for the neighboring properties, at least an annual observation by someone in the village should just, someone say from the building department, just to confirm that there are no new structures or anything like that that have been placed in. I think there's also, it's important to bring the neighborhood in and communicate with them about how they can be good stewards of this. A lot of times when we look at these kind of drainage swales, it's a place where my leaves have gone for 20 years, right? And I slowly filled in my portion of the swale. And then the swale wants to make its own path when the water's flowing through it and it will jump boundary and cause flooding. So communicating and educating the neighborhood about the role they can play in helping maintain that. So it's a maintenance, it's a maintenance issue.
So would this be something that like you could train Kyle on and then like we could have meetings with Kyle and the neighbors?
Yeah, absolutely. We've already talked with Kyle about this, you know, when we did our analysis, much like the rest of the drainage inventory, where we noted some immediate things that they can correct at the highway department. He's been communicated with, and I believe that's on their list of things to do.
Right, like branches or whatever.
Can I ask more specific question? Which is, if we're going for a grant, is it better to do the whole enchilada? Or we find up in five years that, oh wow, we need to do the leg of Crossmore, are they gonna go, "Oh, it's a piddly little project, we're not gonna..." Do you have any sense for how the grant...
Yeah, we were trying to figure out if we could face this, because I agree, it's a big, it's a big fight to take. We could probably find a way to face it. And in terms of what that means for a grant, I don't think it changes your likelihood of getting a grant. And I've even had instances where you get into a project in field condition, you know, you have to change, you have to reduce the scope because the costs have maybe gone up recently, so, yeah. It's a perpetual problem in the modern age. I do think though, it's a good candidate for this, if Climate Smart Program has the same Climate Resilient Communities Program, I think it's a good candidate. It's got a lot of the, a lot of the characteristics that they were looking for in last year's application cycle about repetitive flooding and undersized infrastructure that no longer can handle the size of the storms that we're experiencing due to changes in rainfall patterns.
Not to compare, because we can't compare, because every system is different, but Tivoli got $750,000 to the Climate Smart. The total cost of their project was, you know, could you guys get it?
It's about that, yeah, it's eight hundred and ninety thousand, yeah.
Okay.
Just under that.
This particular option doesn't solve the, the water coming in, like...
This does, all three of them make an adjustment to this drainage area on Seymour. Sorry, I'm using my cursor and you can't see that. So all, under all three options, we recommend that this drainage pipe, which currently comes in like this way, be changed to discharge in the downstream.
Yeah, no, I'm talking more about sort of the end of Chestnut and Star and like all of that stuff over there.
We would still propose the drainage improvements we made here at the intersection and extend it up here. There's a prided drainage pipe that comes between a couple of homes, these three homes here. I don't know their addresses all the time in my head, but I don't know if they've worked together over time, but there's a pipe there that's collecting water from Crossmore and conveying it down, but we couldn't find in the record any easements that went along with that.
I was just gonna bring that pipe that she just mentioned up, because again, the residents seem to have a lot of knowledge about what's going on.
Apparently, yeah.
And I don't know where they're coming, where it's coming from or whatever, but that pipe, right, that goes between those two properties, I've already gotten one of these. No way.
No way, what about it?
Don't touch it.
We're not gonna, they're not gonna let us touch it. They're not gonna give us an easement, they're not gonna give us the right of way, they're not gonna let us do that. They are dead set, both property owners are dead set on us using that pipe.
To have abandoned it.
Sorry, both homeowners are dead set on us using which pipe?
Not using...
Not using that pipe.
Not using, I said, that pipe.
That powder.
So not making it bigger, not doing anything?
Right.
They have developed their properties, they've done all great things.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't have a flooding issue and there's like, sorry, there's no way we're going to help you solve their flooding issues by wrecking our property.
Right, like we've solved our problem, you don't need to mess with it.
Yeah, with, with the exception of, you know, letting the existing swale stay where it is, we are proposing anywhere else where there's some sort of informal drainage network that the village has had no record of, that appears to potentially have been installed by homeowners, we're saying put in, formalize the drainage network in the street where the village has the right to maintain.
That's, that's the only way option one really plays off, because we get out of all of the other issues to be able to say, "We own the road."
Right, we no longer are dealing with all these...
We no longer have all the nuances of maintaining the natural swale that's going through there 20 years from now, 30 years from now, because that's the problem we ran into. It's maintenance over time to be able to do all of this and have that contiguous process in place.
Right.
No fault of anybody, but that's how we got to where we are.
Well, yeah, property owners change and, you know, it's like, can you zoom back in? Let me ask another question. Okay, so even though we don't have the pipe coming down from the top of Crossmore, on all three, you're still recommending that we solve this?
We do this short leg of new drainage...
From Crossmore Drive.
From Crossmore to the intersection with Star and Chestnut, down Chestnut, again, discharging below Chestnut Street. And also make the drainage improvement from the end of Seymour Drive, so replace the pipe that now flows kind of in the reverse direction.
Okay.
Make it, so that would be under all three scenarios, that's sort of in our baseline improvements.
Okay, so the main cost driver for option one is just from Crossmore Drive north, or Crossmore Road, or whatever it is?
It's this 36-inch pipe.
Yep.
And it's obtaining easements at the north end for the existing drainage swale.
Right, but for like option 1-1, where there's a pipe down Crossmore Road?
Yeah.
So that's really the $500,000, is that?
Correct, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
To put this in, what's shown within this oval.
Right.
So that's the additional couple hundred feet, I don't know how many hundred feet off the top of my head.
The west side...
Five thousand dollars per foot.
The west side of Seymour, just north of Chestnut, has somebody who's house...
Yes, here. We have that in our baseline recommendation, is like go clean that swale out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And maintain the...
Here. Yeah, there is a catch basin right here, and I think the swale has just filled in over time. There's some really leafy pine trees, and they've been shedding their pine needles for, you know, probably 50 years, and it's just filled up that swale.
We can't see your mouth, so you're talking about...
Right, under where it says 18-inch HPE pipe.
Where the E is.
Oh, Tivoli. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I had a better pointer.
Fine. Or like a black tie, full-length dress.
Exactly.
So, so your recommendation proceed is?
So my recommendation proceed would be to evaluate the current round of funding opportunities and see what's the best fit. Present you with those options aside if the village wants to make application. We'll be looking at the Resilient Watershed Grant in the next week or two, and so we'll have something back to for your next meeting, as far as what the requirements are there, the match, et cetera, so that you can decide if you want to make an application for that one. And then when CFAs come out in May, we'll provide a summary of what options look viable for this as well.
But there, in the budget cycle we're in right now, we should somehow figure out how to put $300,000 in the budget.
If I, may I make a suggestion?
Sorry, what, why $300,000?
I'm just taking the, you take the math, take existing one, take 20%.
Would it be this coming years?
Right, yeah.
That's what I was gonna suggest. Perhaps it's put a little aside in this cycle and a little aside in the next cycle. So the way the grant programs have been running right now with CFAs is that you make your application at the end of July, the state doesn't announce until, they don't announce awards until December. They're telling December announcement recipients, and I don't know if you've seen this with any of your grants, that you're not gonna see a contract until probably August, September of this year.
Of this year, 2025.
Which means you're not gonna be able to do the work until 2026. So it's like a full year, the 15-month gap between when you get awarded and when you are ready to actually start spending your grant funds.
This is what we're running into with the zoning code grant.
Yeah, I don't know if this state is...
Too slow.
It's a long time.
It's the contracting process, it's unbelievable.
But there'll be additional engineering work or whatever going between now and then, right?
I mean, we can put this on hold, you can include the design as one of your costs in the grant, so the grant program will cover design, at least the ones I put in.
Yeah, but I mean, between now and then, you foresee you as engineering firm doing any more work on this project?
I think we would put this on hold until you guys were successful in finding a way to finance it, be it either through bonding or through grant funds.
Is it possible to combine, to apply for both the Climate Smart and the Resilient Watershed Grant, or they...
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know why you couldn't apply for both. I don't know if one could be the match for the other, though, if they're both state ones.
The resilient is pretty new, it's only like three weeks old.
Yeah, it's a new program, not familiar with it yet.
One suggestion on this one, just given how prices are skyrocketing at the moment, is that maybe we just do a grant, whatever we choose to do, for option, for the most expensive one, because we have the data for it. And then, you know, in three years, when everything's gone up by 50%, we can figure it out. That's just sort of a vague thought that I'm just having.
It's a good idea. It's part of the reason why we're showing a 30% contingency too. So, you know, we've done a base cost based on some of the more current drainage projects that we've done and the real numbers for that, but we do recognize that price volatility has been a real problem for the last five, six years. And so, you know, building in that contingency does give you some room for planning purposes. contingency does give you some room for planning purposes.
And I'm not sure our residents would like us to say, wait three years until we start either, given their flooding situation.
I appreciate their concerns, but I'm not willing to double our property taxes or take a 1.5 million dollar bond when we have the option of actually getting a grant for this.
Oh, no, we need a grant. I think, we can't do it without a grant.
Oh, okay, great.
But that grant process could be at least to start of year number two, not three years out to do the project. We could technically do.
I mean, start doing the project and then get reimbursed.
In 2026.
I mean, that's what we're doing with the zoning code grant, but, you know, that's $25,000. That's not 1.5 million dollars.
Correct, I know, yeah.
So, you know.
Big difference.
It's a capital project, though, much like your sewer and water infrastructure.
Just wanted to check on the tab grant, any work that you do prior to the award and the signing of all the papers you're on the hook for. Is that also true with these state grants?
No.
There are programs a little bit different.
You can backdate your bills?
In some instances, you can, yeah. It depends programmatically. There are some programs, typically what the state does is they tell you there's a date certain to which you can back to anything preceding that you would, you would be responsible for. But it's not a hard and fast date, like six months prior to being awarded. Nothing like that as far as I've understood. It's very much a program.
How we did it for the zoning code is, she was like, what date do you want it to start? And I said, how about January? Because we were, you know, we had bills. And so she was like, okay, you know, but like, we're not gonna get the contract until at least September. So.
Just, I wanna keep just moving a little bit. We're, if you don't mind. Have we kind of gotten enough information?
One last question. In terms of grant applications, have you done all of the work that needs to be done in order to, in order to build a successful grant application?
We have the technical case based on this study to build a successful grant application.
Okay.
We would, of course, work with you guys in terms of any of the, you know, letters of support. It'd be great if there are more photos in the record to get a few more photos of the flooding.
We saw me do that from the, from the residents.
And it, that's actually often what happens, is we just make a request to the residents so that it's supported, yeah.
Thank you, Randy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna continue on. I believe we don't have any more public comment. Hearing that, I'm gonna move on. Treasurer's report.
Okay, treasurer's report is for the period ending February 28. The general fund ended the month with $358,477.41. The water fund ended the month with $151,040.66. And the sewer fund ended the month with $128,736.54. Vouchers presented for payment to include prepays in the general fund total $117,028.50. A grant for police equipment, $161,831.08. The compost grant, $3,0203.39. In the water fund, $41,572.17. In the sewer fund, $64,317.62. Escrows totaling $2,667.2. Water treatment upgrade project, $1,0177.50. Waste water treatment and sewer improvements, $1,004.23. I did have an addition to the vouchers that were presented for payment. First of all, I'd like to thank Vanessa. She did a lot of work on the grant for the compost facility and prepared everything. We did receive, just received the reimbursement of $60,362.71. However, we need to repay, reimburse the Ellersley.
Ellersley.
Ellersley Farms for their work in the amount of $43,161.25. So, in addition to requesting authorization to pay the bills, I request authorization to, to prepare a check for this $43,161.25 that was a late addition.
All right, if you make a motion to approve authorization of paying the bills, including the adjustment for the compost.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, monthly operating statement is provided with the revenue and expenditures through March 11. The water and sewer, March monthly billing in the water, $26,368.28. In the sewer, $34,803.11, and those are due on March 25. Adjustments were signed off by Mayor Bassett and presented for approval.
Make a motion to approve. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And lastly, I just have a few budget amendments to do. So, street equipment, $6,500 is an emergency purchase for the plow that, for the, this was before the upcoming story came and went. And to take that from plan balance, $6,500, to the off-street parking, and I apologize, Rick, because you asked me this last month and I had forgotten to put it on. We're gonna take $1,500 from the off-street parking for the bike racks that we're not doing, and move it to trees, contractual expense for the $1,500 for the village tree work that was done. In the planning board escrow, in the planning board comp plan line item, we're going to move $60,000 of that to the newly established zoning code update line item. Also, from contingency, $3,014 to the attorney line item, which is over budget.
And contingency is now zero?
Correct.
It's about, it's about that time of year?
All right, make a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Karen. All right, we have a lot of purchase requests. Martina, when you're ready, you have all the data on the dental vision.
Um, so it is time to sign off on our 2025 renewals for dental and vision. Both plans have no increase in rates or plan changes.
No way.
What?
That's dental vision.
Well, it's a start.
I'll take it.
Just requesting that the board approve to renew both dental and vision for the employees. I had no concerns or issues with items.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, highway excavator purchase. We discussed it at our budget meeting. This is, you know, per our budget process we're going into, we're trying to bring more work in-house. To be able to do that, we need to buy an excavator, right? The total cost of the excavator is $17,325.85?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three thousand, sorry. $325.85. It is on state bid, and the detail we agreed and talked about would be, this would all come from our capital accounts, 30% from the general, 40% from the water, 30% from sewer. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the expense to purchase the Kubota excavator.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Okay, next is from the Autism Support Committee. The Autism Support Committee, as you all know, has an escrow account that, in the village, that currently has $41,000, and that's where all of this money comes out of, out of that escrow account. The Autism Committee is looking to hire a designer, a digital designer, to be able to help create digital and print media for us, for that committee at the rate of $32 an hour. And we bill at the end of each calendar month, and the invoices will come out of the set escrow account. So, they would like us to approve this for their, to use to work on further getting communication out to the community on what we're doing with the autism support community.
So moved.
Second.
Who's keeping an eye on how much the designers are charging?
The committee and the house, yes. So, we review all bills and, and that come in to make sure that they're reviewed and approved before we authorize payment to come out of the escrow account.
So, could you just briefly, what is that initiative? Is that, what is the initiative that this is going toward?
So, this is gonna go towards improving our communication, creating flyers and materials for our business community to be able to go out and talk about what we're doing to increase involvement in their opportunity to work with us on our, on our rollout for the autism support.
And, and this is an account we're basically holding on behalf of the autism.
We're just, we're just a, we're just holding.
Right.
They raised it.
This account came out of getting grants.
Right.
Right?
Were the administrator for their?
We're paying the bills. Our, our job is, village-wide, is to have the account and pay the bills, which you all approved.
Right, right, right. The money, this account's been funded.
There's no village money going in.
Exactly. So, when you say we're paying the bills, we are administering the bills.
The cabinet, I said, cabinet.
Yeah, yeah. The committee, so the committee has raised and is paying the funds. We are administering the paperwork.
Right. But I, like any, this is a contract with a, with this digital developer, and like to make a motion to approve for the Autism Support Committee to go into contract with this person for development of materials, Peters.
Quite a rate. I haven't seen a graphic designer $32 an hour since 1985.
She must have given them a good, a good discount.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
You already did a motion.
Already did one.
I'll second it.
I thought we did.
You already did it before. She motioned, you seconded.
Right.
So, you're all.
Time to move.
Right.
Thank you.
Done. Next.
Wait, just we both?
Yeah. No. I just said, all in favor, say aye.
Oh, sorry. Who was up first?
Firehouse kitchen surplus. The village, our village municipal fire department is looking to revamp our kitchen. They want to do a total revamp of everything within the kitchen and buy all new. There's a lot of stuff in that kitchen that they, we could put, well, it's a village asset. So, we could get, we could put out on surplus to be able to recoup some funds. So, and what we put out on surplus, the money we get, I'm proposing that we use that money towards the kitchen as well. Okay?
Sorry, who's paying for this kitchen revamp?
Ryan Becking. Ryan Becking.
Okay.
But we will surplus the equipment that is asset.
Yeah, because it's a village asset, and then Ryan Becking is gonna pay for it with, with whatever money is raised from this surplus.
Correct.
Okay.
And then Ryan Becking gives the equipment to the village.
Correct. It's become an asset in the village.
Anything that comes into this building becomes an asset in the village.
Yeah.
Can we encourage them to get other D-Star appliances if they're getting new?
That's a good idea.
Bridge or?
Yep, yeah.
Should I talk to Gordon?
Uh, no, he's not, he's not running it. Let's find out. Walt Cotter is the president, so Walt would be the person to go to. All right, I'd like to make a motion to surplus, I'm gonna read all 15 items, to surplus the list of kitchen stuff.
Secondary, the question.
Wow, it's like the whole thing.
Got first, you're second. All in favor?
No, discussion, discussion. We use this building for, it's potentially for emergency cooling stations.
Heating, cooling, and all that kind of stuff.
So, will their new equipment take into account our needs?
Yes, absolutely. It has to.
Okay.
But they manage it and they do it. They do a great job, and they're using it.
Are they bringing that room down to its studs? Looks like it.
No, just removing everything that's on the walls, except for the cabinets. All right. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for myself and Martina to attend.
Wait, wait, wait. You've made a motion to surplus it. What do you want to do with it?
Oh, good point.
Do you want sealed bids? Do you want to auction it?
No, we'll put it on, we'll put it on the auction in 30 days.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for Martina and I to attend the NiCOM annual conference, May 28th to 30th, at Bolton Landing, with a seminar cost of $325 each, covering meals and mileage. Second. Any questions?
Who, who's having?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for Brian Conley to attend the co-conference.
And Justin Neitz.
What?
And Justin Neitz. I updated that after you.
Oh, I didn't see that. And Justin, he's not on the list.
It's on the new agenda.
So, is the fee double, from $3.85 to double back?
Correct.
Okay.
$3.85 each.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for both of them to attend the seminar conference, Hudson Valley CEO Educational Conference.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to vote on me attending the thing that we voted on last week?
Did you make a motion?
We did it in a meeting.
We did it in a meeting.
We did it.
Okay.
Yeah.
We agreed to.
There's a difference. Did you agree to pay for it, or did you make a motion to do it?
We agreed to pay for it.
Agreed, right. I'd like to make a motion for me to attend the New York Planning Federation lunch on April 7th for $75.
And?
I did that. No, I thought we did that.
And whoever.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and the committee.
Committee.
And we did that at the last meeting.
Yeah, we did it.
Okay, as long as whatever we did in the last meeting allows me to submit a reimbursement.
It was in a regular meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
You didn't fill out a form, but that's.
I didn't fill out a form.
Scratch that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Didn't happen.
Okay.
Emily, we have some cool news you're gonna hear.
I just gave the.
I'll perk them.
New York State Planning Federation, yeah.
Okay, now we're on to resolutions and agreements. First one, I'd like to make a motion to approve the local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established by the general municipal law. This is the 2% tax law.
Don't we have to, don't we have to have the public hearing?
Yeah. Well, we are.
There's no resolution to this.
But we have to.
You're just announcing it, but you already set the.
We have to send the public hearing. At our last meeting, we sent the public hearing for April 8th, remember?
Right. Your, your motion just now was to accept the local law that.
Can't do it yet. You're right. I'm sorry, you're right. Getting ahead of myself.
No, it was a good.
All right, but we have to send the public hearing.
We already did.
We did great for it.
Great for it.
So, is there anything we need to do for this?
Can you please set the time? Because we already have an existing public hearing at 6 o'clock in the morning.
Can we set it at the same time? Because it's gonna be about the same topic, basically?
No, you can't announce. So, let's, can we do it 5:30?
Can we do it 6:15?
6:15. You're gonna do which one first, then?
The budget public hearing is at 6:00.
At 6:00.
6:00.
I don't know if you'll.
I'd just make a recommendation that you do it before the budget.
Right, I agree.
Why don't we do it at 5:30, then?
And do you think you need a pass to talk about it, or do you want to do 5:45?
Do it at 5:45, to make sure our conversation.
And this is for, sorry, this is for.
We all know beforehand.
Well, know beforehand whether or not we're actually gonna need it, so.
All right, so do we need a motion to set this for April 8th at 5:45?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Discussion.
Can we cancel it if we decide we don't need to go?
We'll just do it at the meeting. We'll say we don't need it.
You gotta show up at 5:45. You gotta show up at 5:45.
Any second.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vanessa.
Yes.
You're up. Packaging and reduction and recycling infrastructure.
This is, um, this is a resolution, basically, to show support for our elected officials pursuing legislation at the state level, which would encourage the reduction in wasteful packaging and expand the state's bottle bill to encourage increased recycling. So, we'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution.
Second.
Who does this go to?
The village board shall forward copies of this resolution to Governor Kathy Hochul, the New York Assembly Speaker, New York State Senate Majority Leader, the local state assembly member, the local state senator, and all others deemed necessary and proper.
I know. Necessary and proper.
So I, I think it's, you know, Hinchey's office and Zerahana's office are working to build support for this, so it's basically giving them some, some.
We're going to send a copy of this to all the main people and give it to them. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, indemnification agreement for the crosswalk. This is for the crosswalk being developed and implemented and constructed by rugies. We already have an agreement with New York State DOT. This is a backup to that, to allow us to work with rugies to be able to help cover and defray some of the expenses.
I move that we agree to indemni, indemnification agreement.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is separate, but will we have to be paying for crosswalks from now on or is that a special case?
I'm sorry, Dan.
Will we be having to pay for crosswalks from now on across state route or?
We all, so you can, you can apply to the New York State DOT and they will put you on the list, but we've been on the list since I've been in office and you see how many we got.
No, I was just curious in terms of.
So yes, don't let us pay for it, don't let, they're happy to.
I know, but I'm saying, do we have to pay that annual fee for every, like there was for rugies.
Oh, a permit fee, you know, a permit fee.
No. No.
No. So whatever's going on with this new sidewalk is new.
I'm just wondering, because that thing with rugies has me worried, because now we're talking about, you know, we need more crosswalks, are we going to be paying thousands of dollars every year for the right to have?
For maintenance agreement with the crosswalk. Very possible, if there's maintenance required, they will build it back up, just like catch basins and everything else on the state road, they make us pay. They're happy to let us do it, they're happy to also.
No, I know, I'm just worried about, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
But this is, these is covering it.
This one.
This one.
Yeah, this one.
Yeah.
Okay, we're getting free crosswalks out of there.
That's just a good point to make, it's like there's the cost of installing, and the engineering, and then the capital cost of installing, but then the ongoing maintenance process.
Correct.
Yeah.
And hopefully it's minimal.
Yeah.
Right. All right, so the next is the engagement letter with Thomas, Drohan, Waxman, Pedagro, and Mail. They have a price increase. The price increase for their hourly rate for attorneys will increase from two forty-five to two fifty, and, which includes travel, and the hourly rate for paralegal services will increase from one-twenty to one-twenty-five. I'd like to make a motion to approve the increase for our labor attorneys.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everything's going up.
Yeah. Okay. Malt sale. I think it said at the beginning of the meeting, it's springtime. Every spring we've been doing a malt sale. We have a lot of mulch, which we are able to give back to our residents, and we typically, to get it moving so we can create more capacity space and get it out, we have a sale. And the sale has benefited us very well in the past two years, which we've done it. I'd like to make a motion where the village will sell malt at a discounted rate of thirty dollars a yard and twenty dollars a yard for bulk orders of five yards or more, whereas the village will waive the hundred-and-fifty-dollar loading fee for malt picked up from the highway department.
We're going to do this until the beginning of July?
Till this, this will run, yeah. We extended it last year till this date, so rather than going through it again, let's just do it to the same time, to the same timeframe.
Okay, and the goal is to what, just get rid of all?
Get rid of it all. And when we're done, we're done. Which we ran out of really before the end of, beginning of July last year, and we had to wait till we replenished our supply to deliver it to some of the folks who wanted it as well.
Fill it up all over again.
Okay.
All right. Make a motion to a second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We've been working, I'm going to talk about our wastewater heating system now, right? The wastewater heating system, upon inspection, has revealed that our boiler down there is on its last legs.
Off guard.
Right? So we needed to come up with a recommendation in case, I know you won't talk about it because I don't want to fail, but in case it does, we need to get moving forward on replacing the boiler system at our wastewater treatment plant. Remember, we talked about three options. One option was, we totally revamped the police department and we took out an air conditioning unit, an air exchange unit, condenser, and all that kind of stuff, two sets of it, and to use that as one option, right, to put in place and reconstruct at our wastewater treatment plant building. And just for everybody to hear, that building is not very big. It's a brick, outside concrete block, inside, no vapor barrier, not a very good example of a energy-efficient building, okay? In fact, there's some areas that have some heat loss, which made it difficult for us to figure out. But anyways, back to that proposal. That's a four-ton unit system. The system for this size building, the one we took out of police, four-ton, that's sixteen thousand cubic feet of air that is pumping out, would actually blow the papers and books right off the table, so it's really not size appropriately for that building. So that, that option became optional.
It's so weird, because the police station's not very big.
Have you been into wastewater buildings?
I know.
Okay. And how it's cut up, police building is not cut up as bad, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? So I would ask you all to go down and look at the building, and, but don't touch the boiler. Okay? The second option we considered was replacing it with an energy-efficient boiler. Okay, so we looked at that, and the option to do that, you can get it energy-efficient or you can get a high-efficiency boiler, put it in and still keep our baseboard hot water system, our existing air, our wall insert air conditioning units, and just replace the boiler, okay? Doesn't really improve airflow in the building, doesn't improve where we have heat losses, especially in the small office we have there, which by the way, has a lot of heat loss, but it has no heat in it today, because it was the way the system was designed and installed back in the eighties when it was put in.
It keeps smokes working, you know?
Yeah, I know. So that's between a range of thirteen thousand to fifteen thousand dollars to replace the boiler. Right? Then we looked at.
Can you replace the boiler with another oil?
Another oil fire.
With another fossil fuel boiler.
Well, fossil fuel boiler, yes. That's what boilers are. The third option was to replace it with a heat pump system, which would eliminate the air conditioners that we have in there, eliminate the boiler position, and give us kind of a better environment within that building, even working with the heat losses that we, that we have. So we, we could reach out to Sigma Tremblay as a consultant to help us figure this out because it's beyond my pay grade, to figure out how to do this, and they came back with a proposal to put in a heat pump, heat pump system, which would be twenty-nine thousand dollars, with a central Hudson rebate, which we think is applicable, forty-eight hundred dollars, and a grant that we still have available from Vanessa of ten thousand dollars. So we take fifteen thousand off the twenty-nine thousand, we're down to fourteen thousand dollars for a heat pump, heat pump system. We would, this is under the RFP, but we, so we would need to get three supporting bids to be able to go along and come out and bring it back to the board to move forward on.
Wasn't there a discussion of the bank, the boiler for backup?
So no, there was, yes. We were looking at that because we were trying to figure out how to deal with the heat loss. We modified this system to have two heat pumps instead of one. One fails, we have the other one as a backup that feeds into the system. Right? Both of these heat pumps can be tied into our generators that are there, and so they will be run if there's a power failure. Right? So this solves all of it, all right? It's not the heat pump system though that you saw in the police station where you're going to see the wall-mounted things. These are cassettes that are mounted into the middle of the ceiling. They look and act like the wall-mounted units, but they're a ceiling mount unit that mounts into structure up in the ceiling, so in every room in that, and there's several rooms, there would be one of these cassettes that would be mounted into the ceiling. As you can see, there would be one in the locker room, one in the generator room, one in the front workroom, one in the small room, and one in the rear workroom, these cassettes, and then the two heat pumps would basically feed into all of that.
That's heating and cooling.
Heating and cooling. Replaces our air conditioning, replaces our boiler, our fossil fuel boiler, gives us a backup in case there's a failure, and gives us a backup in case of power failure.
For about the same cost.
For approximately the same cost of going out for the fossil fuel boiler. Yes.
Because of the grant?
Yes.
Yep.
Grants and rebate.
Grants and rebate.
It's like the best solution.
That makes sense.
So I'd like to make a motion that we go out and collect bids for a heat pump, so a heat pump system for our wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Are you doing an RFP?
What?
Are you doing an RFP? You just want.
Just getting three quotes.
We gotta get three quotes.
You don't need a motion to go get them.
Why not? Well, we're going to go out and spend money.
But we're not.
We're not spending money.
We vote when we stop.
When you bring it, you vote when you bring them back.
All right, then, if you're all in favor of that, then move forward. Do that, okay.
Garrett, just want to say thank you for, this was a lot of work.
No problem.
Start again.
No problem. Okay. Every year, those kind of fairgrounds give us a list of the events that they're going to have, right? This year, like no, like every other year, they supply us with the list, there's nothing that we have to do, there's nothing that we have to support to do this, it's just for our information, because it does help us do all of our planning, you know, in terms of what we have to do outside of the village. So I'm providing that to you for your information to move forward on. Okay? What we do have to talk about is the Village of Rhinebeck event application by the Taste of Rhine, by the Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce for the Taste of Rhinebeck, to be held here in the village on May seventh of this year. They would like to make a, they're proposing in their event application a change in traditional way that they've held the Taste of Rhinebeck in the past. What they would like to do this year is close off East Market Street from the Light to Samuel's, all right? And for multiple reasons. One, to create a more atmosphere for the Taste of Rhinebeck, and two, to improve safety for the six-hundred-plus people who attend this event because they're crossing all over the street, going from this restaurant, because there's everybody, reminder that all these are out of the sidewalks, right? So people are walking all over the street, going from this sidewalk to that sidewalk and everything, so it's a, it's a safety improvement as well as create a different atmosphere for the Taste of Rhinebeck. In addition, they would like to have the Village of Rhinebeck partner with them on this, on this application. All truth be told, that does give them some advantages, because if we close East Market Street being a state road, it requires a DOT application. We are just, with this application coming in, we're just under the wire for them to do it, that is a costly application. If we partner with them, we can file the DOT application on their behalf, and we already have all the insurances and everything, which reduces the cost of this event, which then feeds back to, the proceeds of this event goes to donating to the Village of Rhinebeck and the Village of Rhinebeck Autism Support Committee, and other remaining funds will be reused to support the Rhinebeck Chamber of Commerce. So it all kind of comes back if we kind of help and pitch in to be able to do that. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Village, the application by the Rhinebeck Area Chi, Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce, sorry, for the Taste of Rhinebeck on May seventh.
Second.
Some discussion.
Are you approving the application or the application and the cosponsorship?
And the cosponsorship.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would like to, oh, sorry.
You want to separate it?
I would like, no, I don't want to separate it, I want to keep them together. But I would like to say it's pending.
Thank you.
On the approval by, we've already met with the police department, we know we have the applicable staffing to be able to do it, we've reached out, we know we get staffing from police to do it, but we have to work out the logistics, okay? There's some logistics to making sure where we put barriers, what roads and everything we have to close off. There's a meeting on Thursday this week with not only the police department and the chamber and us to work out those logistics, but also with our, our Public Works Department, because what we've done in the past, we've always provided the trash containers and the garbage bags, we're just not going to provide labor to be able to collect them during that evening, it's the responsibility of the chamber to provide the labor, put them where they need them, pull them back up at the end of the evening at some location, and then we'll pick them up the next morning.
We're going to have labor.
And, excuse me, and last thing, the DOT, we get the DOT. So three conditions.
Okay. We're going to have labor that's going to be working into the night because they're going to have to pick up the barricades, the barricades.
No, our police, well, our labor, our labor is our police department.
And they can, they can move the.
They're all, remember the.
Those orange ones, yeah, okay, they can, the cops.
Right, we may need to have some water-filled barricades, but those we can pull the plug and just push them out of the way.
Okay, so the PD can handle the.
That's the way, that's the way it is on.
Okay.
We're not going to bring in highway people.
You said it was contingent on three people?
Three conditions.
Three things.
Three conditions. First condition is working out the logistics.
Okay.
Right, second condition is making sure we have agreement with Public Works, be able to distribute garbage containers, and the third condition is getting the DOT permit.
Okay, thank you.
Which one would apply for?
I would like the fourth condition. Whether or not the road is closed, I think it's important that all things, tables, whatever, aren't in the middle of the sidewalk, so keeping, keeping them shoved up against the side of the buildings, including the retailer racks, and now that Justin is here full-time, he's going to manage that this summer, but I'd, I'd like the.
Passway.
Yes, I'd like the chamber to be monitoring that, they did a terrible job of it last year.
That's technically part of like, at Dardane in general.
No, this is not.
But it's not undermining.
But, so what we're saying is they, if we're closing the street, they can't set up stuff in the street.
They can. Right, they could, but there are more restaurants than just the ones between Samuel's and the intersection.
But they may be in the street this year.
So what happened last year is there were racks of clothing and there were tables of food.
There was no meat there last year. It was all food.
They had to provide a map of their event anyways, so that can all be on their map.
So the point of my story is that the sidewalk on Route 9 between South Street and East Market Street was completely blocked by tables and racks of clothing during Taste of Rhinebeck last year. And we're not closing 9, we're closing 308. So in order to avoid people jumping out into the street, in order to not fall over a coat, we need to make sure that the chamber does a better job of managing their, their folks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when all is said and done, what are we, are we paying for any of it or?
The cost for police support comes out of us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which it would at any rate. No, unless we don't approve it, well. All right, so I have a motion. I think we had a second, right?
I need a second, second for your amendment.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 And if you're optimistic with me, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
I'm sorry, I didn't just speak about that table.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for 21125.
As amended.
As amended.
Uh, second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for 22525, which I'm going to abstain from.
And I'm gonna abstain from.
So moved.
Second.
He already made the move.
Oh, sorry.
Is he allowed to make a motion? Do you mean you can't vote on them?
I don't know.
I'll move it.
Thank you.
Again, Vanessa is second. Now, someone you guys, one of you guys is there.
Second.
All right. And.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, tree commission.
Tree commission did not, it was last week. It is meeting tomorrow, so there is no current report.
Sure.
Vanessa.
I think I have something I wanna mention to you guys. At the next, at our next meeting, I'm hoping to bring to the board a draft of an organics management plan. This covers not just composting, but also bio salads and your foods recycling. And basically, it's documenting a lot of the steps that we've already taken, but just wanna give you a heads up, this will be coming. And then the other thing is, we have, we've had a great push with launching a compost program. We have over 150 households taking part. But we feel strongly that we haven't reached everyone. Not everybody subscribes to the Climate Smart Newsletter or that even the village may use it. So we'd like to do a mailing. And we would do it much in the way that Lydia did the comp plan mailing. It's, we do it through Minuteman where it goes out to all doors in the village. We think that this will reach people that don't even know that we're doing this yet. And so we hope to see a bump in.
So you'd have to bring in a purchase request to do that. PT.
Yeah, yeah. I think it'll be under, you know, under the required first policy amount. But I just wanted to bring that to the board because that, you know, I'm hoping it will get some buzz going. And so I just wanted to let you know that this would be happening. I'll let you know next couple of weeks.
Well, no, you gotta bring in till we approve the expense, right? Do we have to approve the expense?
Depending on how much it is.
How much is it gonna be? How much you pay? We approved your expense to do it.
I think it's gonna be under a thousand dollars. I don't know what our policy says.
Um, that's, I don't either.
I'm not sure, but find out the price and we'll look it up. And if it's over, then you'll just.
We'll be back, okay.
Yeah, and we're meeting so many times between now and people, right, that.
Yeah.
No, I think that sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, letting people know.
Yeah. Some of, like, yeah, we could talk about offline, but I'd love to talk to you about how you get around and how some of the routes extend into the town.
Uh, we didn't.
Yeah, because it goes out to zip code.
It's not by zip code. It's by sort of like sections. It's by postal route.
So we might hand deliver some of them.
Yeah, so actually Eleanor was great. Eleanor ended up hand delivering some of them, and then others of them ended up going to, I think, the gardens or something. So like, some of them went outside the village and I ended up handing deliver some to other people in the village. But, yeah.
The garden is not in the village.
I know. That's why, that was why I started.
It was in a route, it's.
Yeah, it was, it was in the route, so, but it ended up being way cheaper because you don't end up spending first-class stamps on it.
It's way cheaper. Um, maybe one other thing, we had our second round of bids for the CCA today.
Yes.
And unfortunately, it still didn't come under that ceiling that we set. But now, things like the hurt, it's kind of a hurry up and wait because the other towns in the cohort, they decided to also not move forward, but instead they're considering extension of their contract. So that means we have a little bit more room now to watch the market over the next, what do you say, like, month or so? Just see if we could still somehow squeak in under our ceiling. So that was the conversation today. We're in the same boat as this other town, Town of Olive.
Town of Olive.
Over in Olster County, where they're like newly trying to get in on this.
The other municipalities have backed out. So that's down, they're no longer participating.
Yeah. So what was the bid?
It was, um, it was 11.2.
We can share the charge. I don't remember.
Yeah.
We'll just share the charge.
I'll see. Fifty, fifty? For the 50%?
It was for the 50%, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's the only program we're interested in. But again, as Vanessa said, and I brought it up in the meeting, that this was like hurry up and wait. And we've been pushed, pushed, pushed to get it, and now it's like, oh, well, you can wait a little bit longer. Well, you can wait a little bit longer. Now saying we can wait a little bit longer. So I, I'm feeling that this is gonna be a continuous process until they see the rates drop, and then we'll feel where we can fit into a contract or not, all right? So, and that's hard for our community. It's hard to keep our community informed on where we are with the CCA process because we're in this hurry up and wait, see what the next one is in two weeks, see what the next one is in two weeks, see what the next one is in two weeks, until we end, someday down the road, we end up either in or out, okay?
Well, when that happens, it'll happen, and we'll figure out how to communicate about it.
Yeah. I mean, again, like I keep thinking about, are we gonna be entering into a real period of unpredictability? And we were looking at the pricing for, you know, for example, 24 months, we're at a fixed rate. So there's an.
There's an advantage to that.
Right.
Given.
Given we don't.
Take the news out of Ontario.
Right.
Well, they were reselling it today.
Well, yes, but they could be putting it tomorrow.
Amazing.
Yeah. Because our.
It's nuttier than nuts.
Okay. Parks.
So the park committee wrote a letter in support of the Community Development Black Grant for the mini park. Hopefully, we'll be finalizing guidelines on how volunteers can participate and support our parks, all the parks by volunteering, you know, either raising money for, like the lions do for equipment, or by, by volunteering to, to help trim trees, like we did with the pruning with the tree commission, those sorts of things. The budget process, as been mentioned before, is underway, so the committee listed some maintenance and improvements that they would like to see, such as benches in Legion Park, pruning trees, removing invasive species, replacing the dying tree at the Dovoy Park. And then we discussed the need for a facelift at the Legion Park Memorial. And the hope would be that that would be funded. We could get grants for that rather than taking that out of the budget.
Great.
Compliment?
So I was informed on March 3rd that everyone here knows this, but just so everybody else knows about this, I was informed on March 3rd that our, the Village of Rhinebeck won the New York Planning Federation's Comp Plan of the Year Award. And the award ceremony will be on April 7th. I will go. I will find out more about why we were awarded that at the time. So I'll report back on.
The town also got an award.
Why we won.
You know, do you know the town got an award as well? I forget what it's for, same thing.
Same, same organization?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll find out.
Yep.
Yay.
Okay. One little bit of news I would like to put in the last meeting, which I was not in attendance for, you all passed and approved a purchase request for Archtop for the police department for $199 for the service and another $199 for the static IP address. Remember that?
Yeah.
I was pushing back on that the whole time because I thought $199 for a static IP address was kind of absurd, right? I know we needed to have it. It turns out there was a clerical error of our Archtop. The one, the certain, the static era, the static IP address is not a cost of $199 as originally proposed. It's $15.
Oh, all right.
So.
That's more better.
Yeah. Besides the fact that we're getting, besides the fact that we're getting a six times improvement, and we are, but we are backed up over the police department right now on uploading files because we cannot use the current system because it just takes forever. But Archtop is going to be installing our new, our new internet connection on Thursday. So we will have a full one gig going into our police department.
Wow.
Okay?
And out.
And yeah, and out, which is the more important part.
It's, it's one gig both ways.
Yeah, yeah.
It's two times.
Yeah.
Unlike our current plan, which is 600 and 300.
Right.
Right. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the vacation buyer request for employee number 13 at 80 hours and employee number seven at 80 hours.
Second. And these are, these are not unearned hours, correct?
They're not, yes.
Well, this is part of the chaos from last year.
All in favor say aye. Okay, that's the best part of the meeting. Well, not the best part, that comes next. Anniversary. I'd like to acknowledge our court clerk, Trish Adiacalone, for 18 years of service as our Village of Rhinebeck Court Clerk. Thank you, Trish. I also like to acknowledge wastewater maintenance mechanic Scott Ratchen for nine years of service. Thank you very much, Scott. We depend on you a lot. And drum roll please for the person at the end of the table, our village clerk, Martina McClintock. Five years of being here. How time flies when you're half the time.
It sure does.
Something we forgot to put on here, I'd like to also say that Andrew, Andrew McDermott has passed his certification at, for a, to be a Level 2A operator plant. Operators along with Will. And so.
Oh, wow.
I'd like to acknowledge Andy for passing all those tests. We're waiting for your certificate to arrive. And we'll do a good handshake and thank you. Or when that arrives. But he's been notified that he has passed the exams.
Oh, that's great.
Fantastic.
So he now has the same certification that Will has?
Correct. Yeah, so we have a backup.
Wow, we went from like zero to money.
That plan.
That plan, that plan worked great. I'm pretty proud of that plan, so, well done.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Now, for the best part of the meeting, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at.
10:00 PM?
8:02.
8:02.
8:03 according to our new clock.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is that a new clock?
Yeah.